Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This special call meeting of the Mobile County Commission is now called to order. If you will please stand, I will give the invocation this morning, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Gracious Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning with grateful hearts, thanking you for the many blessings in our lives and for the opportunity to assemble here today to serve our community. We ask for your guidance and direction as we endeavor to make decisions that will affect our community and our citizens in a positive way and according to your will. Be with all those in our community and throughout our country who need the peace and the comfort that only you can give as they deal with the difficulties in their lives. We lift up those who've suffered through the devastation of the flash flooding in Kentucky and Virginia and in other communities this past week. Please be with them and help them as they try to recover. Lord, we ask your continued blessings, and we give you all the praise, honor, and glory. In your name we pray. Amen. Okay. Do we have any speakers this morning?
Yes, ma'am. We have two speakers signed up this morning. We have Charlie Miller, who represents AVAP, and would like to make a quick announcement related to the Workday implementation.
Okay. First speaker, Mr., I'm sorry. Please give your name and address, if you will, for the record.
My name is Charlie Miller.
Charlie Miller.
And my company is AVAP. We are a Workday Implementation Partner, and I'm here to just provide a few updates and announcements to the Workday Implementation, which goes live for the financials team today. So, thank you so much for allowing me to take a few minutes to speak. So I'm the Engagement Manager from AVAP, who is working with Dana and the Mobile County team here on the Workday Implementation, the first phase of which went live today, August 1st. And this is a nine-month implementation of the Workday Financial System. We also have the Human Resources, Human Capital Management System, which will be ongoing and is scheduled to go live in January of 2023. So we have work ongoing for that. But today's a very good milestone in that we've finally made it, and Mobile County has the distinction of being the fastest, financials-first implementation of Workday for a county government. So congratulations to all. So, just a couple of details around the project. We started in November of 2021 with our planning stage. I came into the project in February of 2022, which was the start of our initial prototype configuration tenant. And after that, we focused this past spring and summer on our testing to make sure that all of the configuration was sound and then it adhered to Mobile County accounting standards and processes. The scope of the deployment that we went live with today is a financial data management, which is our financial accounting and general ledger system. Also cash management and treasury functions, which includes banking and settlement, budgets, accounts receivable, which in Workday terms is customer accounts. We have accounts payable and purchasing, which is our procurement and suppliers, business assets, and capital projects. Upcoming for January, as I mentioned, is our core Human Resources and Human Capital Management. We also implement our compensation and employee onboarding processes, talent management, benefits, payroll, time tracking and absence, and Workday learning management. So just one final thing, and I know Dana may have a few words in appreciation for her team, but I just wanted to mention the team members from the AVAP team who participated in this event up till this point. Again, as I mentioned, my name is Charlie Miller. I'm the Engagement Manager. Rich Walega is our Director of Government Programs. Maggie McIntosh, also a Director of our Government Programs. And then our consultants are Page Man, Brian Babcock, Kirti Venegala, Melissa Pick, Manish Patel, Frank Schonenborn, Ramesh Sudaram, Kevin Hare, Terry Kennedy, Cynthia Tolak, Mike Deal, Jared Allspach, and Chioma Ukebu. Thank you for your time this morning, and I'm available afterwards for any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you very much. Dana, did you have any? I'm sure you have some comments. You know, well, first of all, I want to say I am so proud of our departments that have worked together to implement this. You know, the commissioners haven't been involved in the day-to-day implementation of this. I mean, we know what it does. We're like everybody else. We're going to be trained on it. But it has been a tremendous amount of work. I can, you can only imagine when you completely change a system this way, what all goes into that, when especially when it involves payroll and finances and so forth. And so you really have to have people who know what they're doing, who are dedicated to getting it done, and that is exactly what we have. And I'm so proud of our team and the consultants who have been a big part of this as well. Thank you for working with us. And just before Dana speaks, I think we ought to give the whole team. Do you have any of your team members here today? Let's have everybody stand.
No, they're working.
And IT and really everybody who's been involved in this from the county perspective.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
You certainly deserve that. We appreciate it. So, thank you, and give us some comments.
First, I want to thank the commission. Last year with the budget, you approved a $3 million investment. And throughout this journey, because definitely implementing Workday was a journey, I had completely support some decisions that had to be made by Eddie and Glenn, so I thank you. I had meltdowns in Glenn's office numerous times, so thank you, Glenn. You know, you never know. I was surprised to learn that we were the fastest. That wasn't my goal. My goal was just to get the county a system that wasn't going to be used by finance alone. It's actually a county system. And I think we've developed something and designed something that everybody will be proud of. It actually puts data, real-time data, at your fingertips. Feel free to call me if you need information, but you'll be able to get it if you can, you know, yourself on your smartphone or on the Workday website. My team, I have the best team. They worked tirelessly. They worked nights, weekends. I blocked all vacation. You know, sometimes I'm surprised I didn't have four flat tires in the basement, but you know, they were really good. They really, they rose. They went above and beyond what was required, and this wouldn't have been possible without my staff. They were very impressive, and I'm so proud of them. This is actually their moment. I'm just there witnessing it. So thank you so much for everybody that helped. Thank you.
And to the administration as well, because as she said, you know, the buck kind of stops with the administration when there are problems. Our administrators get involved to help figure out those problems. So it's definitely a large team effort here, and we appreciate it again. Any questions or any comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. We have another speaker?
We do. But before our presentation by Volker and Horn, we have Mr. Michael Burt has signed up to speak about the Agenda Item Number One. And it's Michael Burt, B-U-R-T.
Okay. Mr. Burt, if you will, if you will give us your address, please, for the record.
I live at Beadle Place. That's 351 Conti Street here in Mobile. Apartment 816. I really didn't plan on speaking today, but since it's extemporaneous, I hope you all forgive me. You know, in regards to what's going to be decided about the money that's involved, I'm familiar with the ARP, the E, let's see, Emergency Housing Vouchers, the PHAs, the PCVs, all of these acronyms that everybody's using these days. And it takes a lot to finally figure out what's what. I'd like to tell everybody a story here about a friend of mine. His name's John. And John used to play for Auburn. And he actually has been homeless for a few years. And he's disabled. A few years ago, he was pronounced disabled. He's blind. He also has cirrhosis of the liver, not from drinking. He had it from a hepatitis situation. In addition, he happens to be dealing with hernia. And John's in pretty bad shape. I went with John to Housing First to try and see about getting him on a list, get him into some housing. I was familiar with what was allowed. There were emergency vouchers that he qualified for. And when I went in with him and he gave the information of the young lady, when she finished, she said, "Well, I'll put you on the list, but I've got to tell you, it's probably a list that you'll never get off of." Now, we're all talking about a great deal of money here. And my question is, what's being done for not just John, but for each and every one of those individuals out there to help them get off of that street, to help them to move on? Because I think a lot of these funds, that's what it was intended for. Ladies and gentlemen, I was homeless from 2014 to 2018, and it was really work to get out of there. And not, wasn't a lot of help from any authorities. All I'm proposing is that y'all consider, before you redistribute these funds, please look at, try to get ahold of the Public Housing Authority right now. You can't. Try to get, they've transferred everything over to Housing First. You try to get a hold of Continuance of Care. You can't, because they've passed it off to somebody else. There are deadlines of when this is going to end where people can't sign up. And those people don't even have access to the internet to be able to find out when that deadline is. There's been no outreach. Who's going to the man on the street? You want to talk about not wanting the gapers to be used? What about Mobile Press Register Building? What about many of the other facilities that are here that could be used to temporarily house people to get them off the street? Because you know what? When John finished with his second meeting with them at Housing First, they handed him a tent and a sleeping bag. Is that the way we house people in Mobile? With a tent and a sleeping bag? Anyway, I thank you for your patience. I thank you for your understanding. Like I say, I just hope everybody will consider where all this money goes distributing out for the things that we need in this city. I would love some new sidewalks, but we need those things. But let's look out for the individuals. Because you know, John was told he was on a list that he might not ever get off of. There's only one list I want to be on that way. That's the Lord's List, and I'm to be called with him. And I hope all of you feel the same way. So let's get rid of the people on the list before we spend the money elsewhere. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Burt.
No one else has signed up to speak this morning, so.
Okay. Glenn, you want to read the Agenda Item?
Number one, approve the Mobile County American Rescue Plan Act Strategic Spending Plan and authorize the commission present to sign all documents, including the sub-reception agreements that are in accordance with the plan.
And I would recommend that, since this is the first tier of this plan, that there will be some follow-up spending as well, is my understanding, that we perhaps add in Strategic Spending Plan Tier One, just to identify it as the first phase.
Tier One.
Tier One, correct. Okay. This morning, we do have this one Agenda Item. This is to approve the Rescue Plan that we have been working on for about a year and a half now through our consultant group with Horn and Volker. And it's been quite a comprehensive, lengthy process that has required a lot of input from not only the community, but from the commission as well. And I think where we are today, we have identified needs within the community, very critical needs, that this funding is intended to support. And it's, if there's one thing that we know, is that the needs, there's a lot more needs out there than there are dollars to spend, unfortunately. And we have done our very best, at least in this first tier, and there will be more phases to come, but in this first tier, to try to balance spending in areas that we feel that meets the requirements of the guidelines of the Treasury Department and affects very positively the human condition throughout Mobile County. So with that, I know with Volker, we have Laura Russell. I think I see Stan, in addition to George Talbot. I don't know. I think he's here as an observer. And also, we have Timothy Smith with Horn. And so at this point, I will turn the presentation over to you, and I know you will go through and explain each of the allocations as well as how the process worked to get us to this point today.
Thank you. I'm Laura Russell with Volker. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay. So today, we're going to be talking about the American Rescue Act Spending Plan, Tier One, that is, so.
Laura, excuse me. Did we get a motion? Or were you going to do the motion in second after the presentation? Okay.
We're leaving.
Okay, okay. All right, we're going to go over the agenda today. So first on the agenda, we're going to talk about what is the American Rescue Plan Act. Then we're going to kind of go over the eligible uses, the four different eligible use categories, the spending framework that the staff and us and the commissioners have all agreed on to provide a development on evaluating these projects. Then after that, we're going to go over the proposed spending plan, the projects that are detailed within that spending plan, and then go over the next steps, which will be administering the funds, the compliance and reporting upon that, and the project closeout and reporting.
Good morning, Commissioners and attendees. I'm Timothy Smith from Horn. First off, I want to echo Commissioner Hudson's statements in that there's been a lot of deliberate work over the last year to get the county to a position to actually start to expend money in a compliant manner. From day one, the Horn and Volker team, our goal has been to prevent negative audits, to prevent negative feedback, and to prevent clawbacks of funds. So we have not been in the position to choose recipients of funds, but we've been in the position to work with the county to develop a framework to evaluate proposals from the county and really evaluate both the eligibility of the applicant as well as the program that is proposed. In so doing, we have to draw on a lot of different federal and state guidance, federal guidance that existed before the American Rescue Plan Act as well as the precepts and requirements that are associated with the American Rescue Plan Act. So, very briefly, I think a lot of people hear the term ARPA or American Rescue Plan Act, but they may have very little familiarity with it. This is President Biden's bill that was signed into law March 11th, 2021. We can actually, interestingly enough, make expenditures or reimburse expenditures that occurred and are documented as correct after March 3rd of 2021. It is a unique bill in that it ran through the US Department of Treasury. Typically speaking, the US Department of Treasury does not allocate funds in this manner, particularly in this way. Each state received a state allocation under the State Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. Every county in the United States received their own allocation. All municipalities received a direct allocation that have over 50,000 in population. And municipalities that have under 50,000 were also able to receive an allocation at three requests of the state. Those are called non-entitled, meaning it's a government. And so the deal is responsive to coronavirus 19. As you can see there, it provides financial aid to families, governments, businesses, schools, nonprofits, and other entities that are impacted by COVID-19. It is, I think, a little bit of a misnomer in that a lot of people believe that it's just kind of money that you can spend as long as it seems like a good use or a traditional government service, then you can expend it in that way. Unfortunately, that's not necessarily the case. We could talk in more nuance about that as we proceed forward, so. Key objectives of this funding. These are from Treasury. This is put out through the United States Treasury. They do, and before I go any further, I do need to make sure that we impress everybody that we are dealing with the State Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, which is just one component of the American Rescue Act Plan. There are a bunch of different objectives and criteria associated with that. And so we have built our framework around those rules and regulations. But the key objectives from Treasury are to fight the pandemic and support families and businesses that are struggling, maintain vital services, build strong, resilient, and equitable recovery by making investments that support long-term growth and opportunity. So what are the eligible uses? In all candor, they're actually very restricted in many respects. And so I'm not going to read this entire slide to you, but you can see that the emphasis there was public health economic impact, premium pay for workers. Premium pay has been, I know even in this area, a very controversial topic as to who is eligible to receive premium pay. And so we've had to look into that, and also infrastructure. I would be remiss if I did not state that this money is not intended to replace the causeway bridge. That's not the design. The Department of Treasury has been very, very restrictive in what infrastructure spends are there. So initially, the only infrastructure expenditures were for drinking water, wastewater, stormwater, and broadband. Interestingly, those do not have to have, your expenditures there don't have to have a tie to COVID-19 necessarily. Having said that, and we'll get to it in a second, there is a revenue loss category which allows for the use of the funds in a more broad fashion related to traditional government services. And so there are some infrastructure expenditures that are permissible there. The main goal when the law was passed was certainly to address the public health impact of COVID-19. There, as we all lived through, there was a tremendous impact on communities, both business, household, government. Nonprofits all felt the weight of this global pandemic. And so the money is designed to, not necessarily, it's not enough money to make any entity whole, but it is certainly designed to provide a benefit to those communities to help overcome the impacts they experienced because of COVID-19. So, and the money can be used with a tie to COVID-19 actually pretty broadly, but you have to be able to substantiate that. And so that's one of the things that the Horn and Volker team and our due diligence around the expenditure of these funds, we were very deliberate in trying to make sure that within the restricted expenditure categories that there was, and we could articulate an actual tie to COVID-19 and not something that just kind of passes the red face test, but something that is actual, because eventually all of this money is going to be audited, and we need to be able to substantiate the expenditures. So revenue replacement is a very good tool that has been expanded as the American Rescue Plan Act guidance has continued to be made available to the public. This does allow Mobile County and other recipients to spend money in a more traditional way. So there are two ways that you can look at this. You can take a standard allowance of $10 million, and you can use that in a way that is a traditional government service. One of the misnomers there is that, and with all the revenue replacement, is that entities, once they receive this money, because it's the normal pathway that maybe Mobile County would push the money out, that they're kind of free and clear, and they sign a contract, and they get the money, and they expend it like they say they're going to. This is a national misconception, but the money still has all of the same federal strings attached to it that would be attached to any other source of federal money. And so what we mean by that is you still have to be 2 CFR 200 compliant, which means that all your procurements have to be federally compliant. You still, if the project is large enough, have to adhere to Davis Bacon requirements, which are wage requirements. Things like that that are quite burdensome, honestly. They still stick to this money, and so it's not free money. Mobile County, because of the ability to articulate a loss due to COVID-19, chose to calculate their actual revenue loss via formula that the US Treasury provides. And so for that reason, it allows the county to grab more money out of the 80-plus million that they receive to use for more general purpose methods, such as, you know, work on schools or hospitals, road building, environmental remediation, healthcare things that may fall outside of the restricted category in the provision of police, fire, and other public safety services. Premium pay, as I've stated, has been a source of a lot of confusion around the country and one of the things that we've been trying, we've tried to be extremely deliberate about. And again, I'm not going to read this entire slide to you. I will acknowledge that there are a lot of areas around that have used the money in the premium pay method that can cause some levels of confusion. The Horn-Volker team was hired to try to make sure that Mobile County adhered strictly to the guidance that's been provided by US Treasury. And so that's what we've attempted to do in this sector. The money is really supposed to be restricted to people that were working in harm's way during the pandemic. And so you can see examples of professionals in different sectors that are eligible to receive premium pay. Infrastructure. Everybody needs infrastructure money. Everybody is trying to use this money in a way that can enhance infrastructure, because it's a lot of money, and there's not a lot of money that's out there and available in the infrastructure space that typically comes from the federal government outside of things like state revolving funds for water. And so we have received a lot of requests for different infrastructure projects. We vetted those with scrutiny, but, you know, in a way that we're simply trying to call balls and strikes and not make any sort of a declaration as to who should be funded or who should not on a practical matter, but very much on a regulatory matter. Can they be funded or can they not? And allow the county to make those decisions.
So when we were contracted about a year ago, we helped the county develop a strategic spending plan, which consisted of a framework that had some guideposts in it. And those guideposts allowed not only to establish recovery goals for the county and make sure that the projects that we chose were in alignment to those county priorities, but also that they hit on the eligible use categories that Timothy discussed earlier. So up here, you can see some of the spending framework, the guideposts that we established for the county. First thing that we did with the county is, on July 30th, 2021, there was a public input survey that was launched. It was open for about 30 days, and we had 146 responses. The reason that we sent this public input survey out was so we could get an idea of what everyone in the community wanted to spend to have these dollars spent on. Not only was, not only do we have 146 responses, it was also boosted across social media platforms. It was picked up by local news stations, and it was also published in multiple organizations' newsletters, which consisted of 21,000 people that it reached on the Facebook post, and it was shared over 110 times. So we developed five specific recovery goals that would help address the community needs, aid in immediate response to COVID-19 pandemic, and invest in long-term growth initiatives. Those five recovery goals are providing direct response to the public health crisis, strengthen local government operations, improve public facilities and infrastructure, provide aid to the most vulnerable populations, and increase economic recovery and growth efforts. Mobile County noticed that they should put out a RFP for proposals on how Mobile County noticed that they should put out a RFP for proposals on how they should seek funds through the public, from agencies, nonprofits, organizations, private entities, and local governments. That was put out on September 27th, 2021, and it was out for about 30 days as well. We had a public webinar and training sessions to educate external agencies about the application process and eligible uses set forth in Treasury's interim final rule. We, at the end of the closing period for the proposals, we received nearly 214 applications, and that was actually four times more funding requests than what Mobile County is actually allocated. So they had $80.26 million in allocations. We received more than four times the amount in funding requests, so that says a lot.
While we're on that topic, of the 214 applications, the Horn and Volker team, we risked enough in every one of those. So we went through a very deliberate process, multiple levels of review, in determining the eligibility of the requested programs. And so that was our first filter or litmus test for what should potentially be funded out of those applications that we reviewed.
So as Timothy kind of discussed, we helped Mobile County establish a spending strategy. Where the commissioners and staff established a strategy to understand the needs expressed by the community. We evaluated and scored each potential project to ensure proper justification, Treasury guidance, as well as alignment of those county priorities and those goals that were discussed in that last slide. During the proposal evaluation process, there were five main categories that we broke it down and looked at, the eligibility assessment and complexity rating. So as Timothy mentioned, we did a thorough risk assessment, an eligibility assessment on all 214 applications. So with that, there was a complexity rating put on each one of those projects to determine how complex that project was. We had a map, GIS map, that was created where we put all project locations on an identified map, so we could see if it actually fell within a QCT, or if the project was more geared towards impacted or disproportionately impacted areas. With that, there was an equity assessment done on there. After we went through those two processes, we met with the county staff, and we reviewed all 214 applications. It was a full, long day of a work session, but they did a great job going through and looking at and vetting every single one of those projects. Once we went through that, we met with all of the commissioners individually to brief them on the results of the proposals and the evaluation, therefore they could look further and break those projects that were eligible down to the recommended spending plan that you'll see here shortly. The, I guess it was towards the end of April, the Tier One and Tier Two projects were identified by our commissioners, and those projects moved into a subrecipient evaluation phase where we actually vetted those subrecipients in more detail. So we went through a thorough process of evaluating those subrecipients' risk of noncompliance.
Yes, just on that, as I say, for 43,700, we did this day, that has been, we called a lot, we held a lot, greatly appreciated. We know that it's fairly invasive, but it is a necessary step to make sure that these projects are going to be good projects, and it's a necessary step to evaluate risk so that the commissioners can make the most informed decision possible before they do fore. You may have received requests for audited financials, or have questions as to whether you've managed federal funds before, or whether you have staff that have done that, so that makes it a little invasive, but these are all dealing with our risk evaluation that can help educate the county before they do fore with a contractual agreement.
So now it's a spending plan that we're going to kind of jump into and discuss the different projects that are broken out into the spending plan and how they're broken out by expenditure categories. So in addition to the funding required to mitigate COVID-19 related to lost revenue, which was the revenue replacement that Timothy hit on earlier, Mobile County also prioritized dedicating its allocation to economic development, health and social services, and affordable housing. So the strategic spending plan was created to balance community investments and government service. It outlines communities' priority projects and how funds are to be spent, and it's flexible. The county may adjust these projects and award totals as needed. So there will be a Tier Two spending plan to go with that. So the proposed spending back expenditure category, if you'll notice, we have proposed $58 million in total allocations, with $17 million going into negative economic impact, $11 million in public health, 1.7 in infrastructure, public health, negative economic impact to the public sector, that is around $4 million, administration for, and revenue replacement, $18 million. And to kind of hit on the revenue replacement, the calculated revenue replacement was $19 million, so there is still a few hundred thousand dollars left to identify there. So jumping into the negative economic impact, $17 million of proposed funds, that is a total of 17 projects and 30% of the $58 million that's proposed. So I'm not going to go through and read off all of the projects unless you guys would like me to. We will have. Yep. Yes, so the detailed strategic spending plan will be online for anyone to view as well as these projects. As you guys all here, you guys can see the 17 different projects that are proposed under the negative economic impact that makes up $17 million. Under the public health category, total proposed funds is $11.9 million, six projects, and 21% of proposed funds are spent from the $58 million. Under the infrastructure category, total proposed funds of $1.78 million, two projects, and 3% of that. Public health and the negative economic impact to the public sector, that's a total proposed funds of $4.4 million, two projects, and around 7%. Administration category, $4 million, one project, and around 7% as well. And last is revenue replacement, total proposed funds, $18.74 million, four projects, 32%. And this is the entire list of projects with total proposed funds are $58 million, 093894.03. So as we've kind of hit on a couple times throughout this presentation, we have a remaining ARPA funds still to allocate. So there's around $22 million in funds that will still need to be distributed.
The, sorry, Shree, I'm bad about not talking into the mic. One of the mandates of the American Rescue Plan Act, State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, is that the funds have to be obligated by December 31st of 2024. They have to be expended by December 31st of 2026. There is probably a, there's a likelihood that maybe those dates are extended, but as we sit here today, that is the burden that we have. And so in obligating funds, that basically means that the funds have to be under contract towards a particular project by the end of 2024, and the county has to expend their money by end of 2026. It does not necessarily mean that projects would be complete, but depending on the type of the project and the payment mechanism, reimbursement, or forwarding cost, maybe these projects, many will need to be completed by the end of 2026. They certainly will continue to be liable to the federal government, though, for the receipt of the money and adhering to federal requirements.
So after today, the next steps will, today it'd be the approval of the funding by the commission. After that, it's signed agreements, administering funds, and the projects will begin. With that will come compliance and reporting throughout the remainder of 2024 and into 2026, and then project closeout and the final report to Treasury. And the last thing on there is the modifications to the plan, so any modifications that need to be made will be included as a revision. And the last part, Volker and Horn merely provided an analysis and framework that allowed Mobile County to make informed decisions on which projects to fund. Mobile County Commission Strategic Spending Plan will be added to Mobile County's website for those that wish to review it in the future. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, Timothy and Laura. Very, very good job. Point, Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments of the Horn-Volker group? Okay. Then we are ready to proceed with a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All right. Stan, that stands approved, and very good. Congratulations, Timothy. Okay.
And number two, mission announcements and/or comments.
All right.
Number three, approve a request for motion to adjourn until August 8th, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Stand adjourned.